Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff and members of the public to our June the ninth council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to request Mrs Pearson for the roll call, please.
Your worship. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel. Counselor Field.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Mayor Luiz Lee. Sorry, that's the mayor.
It's okay. Present.
We have a quorum.
And I'd like to ask Mrs Pearson for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odawa and the Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number twenty-nine of eighteen twenty-seven. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs Pearson. I'd like to request at this time that council declare conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork for the clerk. That'll move us on to the adoption of the agenda. You do have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the agenda of the June ninth, two thousand twenty-five regular session of council.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to our minutes. We have a motion before you regarding the minutes of a council meeting held on May the twenty-sixth. I'll ask again for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the education session held on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
We're doing the regular minutes first.
Regular minutes first.
Yeah.
That would be for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions, errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, that motion carries. That'll take us now on to the council education session held on May the twenty-sixth. There's a motion before you once again. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the education session of council held on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the moment of reflection. I'll ask everyone to please stand. Thank you, please be seated. That'll take us to the roundtable announcements. And tonight, we start with Counselor Hyatt, please.
Just do things to share since last council meeting. One, I attended the Strong Mayor Framework Technical Overview Presentation provided by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And two, I did a little bit of training called Strategic Thinking, Planning and Leadership. That was provided by AMO.
Good, thank you. And I also attended that one meeting. Okay, thank you. We'll move now to Counsel O'Hara, please.
I have nothing at this time.
Counselor Welsh.
Um, yes, I was just notified this evening that Jane Tuskey, while not properly in Petrolia, was the recipient of the Robert Crawford Community Service Award from the Ontario Genealogical Society. So, well deserved.
Oh, it's good news, thank you. Okay, that'll move me now to Counselor Clark.
This Pizza Fest, I guess, great job by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Great job by Julie, Larissa, Tara, Leah, Leah, Nicole, all of the unbelievable number of town staff that gave their time as well on Saturday, along with the regular crew of volunteers. So, I think a great job again.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I'll also report on that, but it was a great event. Deputy Mayor Field.
Yeah, thank you through you. I also attended Pizza Fest and what Bill said. Yeah, it is amazing our town staff outdid themselves. It's so nice to talk to people that are there, that are from outside of our community of what we can do in a small town and what our staff does every time they just outdo themselves. So, and I also attended the Strawberry Social for the hospital auxiliary, which was like it was well attended, so.
Good, great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I have a few things. First of all, Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasure, and I met with the King's Royal Hussars from England on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at Victoria Hall. I welcomed them to Petrolia and gave them a short tour of the theatre and council chambers. Special thanks to Mrs. Linda Smith for arranging this event. Mrs. Tara Wagner, Marketing Special Events Associate, and Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, for all their help. I attended the Lampton County Council Meeting held on Wednesday, June fourth, and will continue to keep council informed. I attended the two thousand twenty-five Women of Excellence Presentation hosted by the Sarnia Community Foundation at the Donny Club on Thursday, June the fifth, two thousand twenty-five. It was a good event and well attended. I attended the tree ceremony at the Fairbank Park on Friday, June the sixth. The weather turned out and the event went very well. Special thanks to Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Deputy Operations Clerk, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts, Communication, and Mrs. Leah Davis Lumley, and Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasure, was also present. I also took part in the Pizza Fest on Saturday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The weather and entertainment was great and a good crowd took part. And I'll try not to miss anyone. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Mrs. Julie Bullock, staff, councillors that took part, service clubs, volunteers and sponsors for a great day. That's all I have. Thank you. That'll take us to correspondence for information. We have items A to D, and there's a motion on the floor. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file correspondence, items ten A through D.
Any questions from council or anything you'd like to pull out? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now to item number eleven. We have correspondence from Mr. Dan Brown regarding the train. And I think it's pretty well opened up. I'm going to ask for direction from council how you'd like to deal with this. But there's no motion before you at this time, but I will open it up for discussion. Counselor Welsh.
Wondering if you'd like to refer to Petrolia Heritage for a recommendation on that?
I don't have a problem with that. That would be, I think that's fine with me. Would you like to move that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll need a second, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. And then, so the motion basically is that this item be referred to Heritage for a report back to council. Okay? I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That takes us on now to our delegation and presentations. We have a presentation from Mr. Scott Maris Largo Group and Mr. Justin Fidler. And I'd like to ask you if you'd like to come forward, please. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship, members of council and staff. I appreciate you having us here. We're here to deliver the operational assessment of the Greenwood Arena that our firm undertook over the last few months, working closely with Julie and her staff. Just to introduce ourselves, first off, so myself, I'm Scott Maris. I'm, my full-time role is the Director of Community Services with the Municipality of Middlesex Centre. So, in addition to Largo, that is my full-time role. And I think as you'll see tonight, we share a lot of similar challenges in the work that we do. And with, especially with respect to the Greenwood Arena and our Elderton Arena as well. This is my business partner, Justin Fidler.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I am Justin Fidler. I have been working in the parks and rec and facility fields in the last thirty years, both at the municipal level and at the private level, including OHL and NHL facilities as well. So, hockey is in my blood, hockey facilities, and it was great to get involved in this facility project.
I will ask your gentleman to speak into the mic too, so this is a recorded meeting. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, no problem, your worship. So, just a quick intro of Largo Group and what we do. So, we started off as a facility management firm to support private and not-for-profit and municipal contracts in what we've done. We've kind of evolved into doing things like building condition assessments and park condition assessments over time, leveraging our experience over the years. So, we're in a slow build as a consulting group. But as you can see, we've got over sixty years of experience in the arena industry, you know, which we felt confident coming into the Greenwood Arena and helping out on this report. So, just a project overview, it's just kind of following along with the report that's also in front of you. It was really to help you with an understanding of what you're, you know, a bit of a strategic direction on how to move forward with the Greenwood Arena as it stands right now. End of useful life was an important deliverable on this is understanding what, you know, how much longer do we have with this facility? The report also, you know, helps support council and staff and make an informed decision on what to do next, where to focus our energy and our, more importantly, our budget dollars. You know, it also includes that insight on the accessibility, the safety and more importantly legislative compliance pieces that come with that, especially in an aging facility. We've included some high-level estimates. Now, these are by no means, these are very high-level baseline estimates. They could move depending on the scope of work. So, just to make that clear, look at some funding options that are currently out there in the industry and of course, the phased implementation plan based on what we've seen. And with supporting reports from folks like Monteith Brown, who I know did your master plan a few years back. We recognize through this, through this project and certainly spending time with Julie and Rick, that this arena is critical. It's a community hub within the facility. It's very important to the community, staff and certainly council. With an older facility, we recognize its aging. It's time to make some key decisions and work towards either a replacement or reinvestment into the current facility. Through our understanding, I know council sounds, appears to be in support of maintaining this facility because it's such a vital piece to this community. Also, you know, the report also lines Monteith Brown's work in twenty twenty that also states that, you know, certainly recommends optimizing the existing facility. And then to also look at, you know, exploring those additional partnerships and grants that might be available throughout. As you know, the facility was built in nineteen sixty-two. We understand that it went through some significant renovations in two thousand seventeen as part of a grant through the Ontario Trillium. Much like what we deal with on a day-to-day basis at the Elderton Arena, where we share land with the Elderton Agricultural Society. This facility to share has that land use agreement in place with your agricultural society as well. The facility itself has seen some significant refrigeration repairs over the last few years, and that's been good to see. I think there's some room for improvements in some of these areas. There's certainly some energy efficiency opportunities that should be revisited on the controls from what we have noted. The timing of this report, in the midst of this, of course, the MOL, the Ministry of Labor came knocking and did an inspection, which is not out of the norm. We've seen many of these inspections throughout Ontario. So, this is again, not out of the norm, and we can note that all the deficiencies have been rectified since. And of course, your recent roof inspections. So, you know, there is some deficiencies there, which we'll get into a little bit. Is there anything you want to talk more on the?
The refrigeration system that was identified there over the last couple of years, the repairs have also been improvements, enhancements made to the existing system. So, kudos to the existing, the staff now that have been taking those recommendations from their contractor and making those changes and making those upgrades to a better service to the plant and help to continue to extend the life of the refrigeration plant.
So, through our walk around, and Justin has more experience on this, and he may allude to a few more things on the AODA compliance piece. We spent quite a bit of time with Julie Sawchuk, who's an accessibility consultant. So, we really, you know, through our partnership with her is understanding some of the AODA requirements and needs and things that we felt like we were pretty good and had a solid foundation in that. But, you know, she adds a whole new level to this. So, we do note a few things within the report, such as although I know we do have a lift in the back, but perhaps, you know, future considerations should be looking at, you know, an elevator that is more designated to the front and a little more accessible, allows for a more dignified kind of access to that upper level, which there's a lot going on with the community hall upstairs and the bleachers as well. Noting the washroom retrofits, so, you know, certainly adding an accessible or even better, a universal washroom. There's a lot of space there within the facility to do so. Parking, so look to bring some parking closer to kind of the main entrance and limit that or shorten that access for those and those accessible viewing areas to continue, you know, enhancing those accessible viewing areas throughout the building.
Yeah, as Scott was mentioning, through our partnership with Julie Sawchuk, our partnership involved taking one of our facilities in Middlesex Centre and involving the Rick Hansen Foundation and working with our accessibility consultant, we were able to achieve a silver level distinguished. And what it has done is opened our eyes to the needs that are out there, more so than what we thought. And we identified some of these areas and kind of put a different lens on it to look and see what improvements we can have, what improvements can be made and what improvements can be recommended to just to create a better space for all mobility-assisted visual impairment and hearing impaired as well. So, it's not just accessibility, it's for everyone.
Some of the, on the energy side of things, there's a significant amount of opportunity there. Certainly upgrades to lighting throughout. There's grants out there such as Save On Energy that can be leveraged through that. But also maximizing the smart controls or the control systems within the refrigeration plant, you know, ensuring that the refrigeration plant and the control systems that are already there, they're being optimized to their full effect. You know, certainly through future perhaps renovations, there's maybe some opportunity to look at some heat recovery, you know, with the building systems, just something to be mindful of. There, it doesn't necessarily have to be a full sustainable geothermal, you know, solar and get into those extra costs. There's a lot you can do certainly on the control side of things to bring down those runtimes, especially in your refrigeration plant, that'll be your biggest energy user within the facility. So, there's lots of opportunities there and working with your refrigeration contractor, Black &amp; Mac is critical. The, you know, and the, what we noticed when we were on site, there is a, I noticed the machine had a level ice system, the laser level. So, re-engaging with that or re-initiating that because that is critical in keeping that ice level at a depth that, you know, can maintain, you know, from an energy efficiency standpoint, it maintains it at a good level. And certainly, we've seen some huge energy reductions in that. I think the level ice system will, you know, they'd be able to showcase that over a period of time. So, that return on investment is huge.
Some challenges there in talking to staff was the, some issues they had with it and repairs that were made. We would recommend engaging with the manufacturer to get back and provide a real more in-depth staff training session. So, staff are, you know, they're ready to use it, they can speak highly of it, and you'll see results.
One of the things we looked at or we were asked to look at is just to highlight some of the funding opportunities that are out there. There seems to be a number of municipal, provincial, not so much on the federal, maybe every now and then, but the provincial opportunities, whether it's the Enabling Accessibility or it's the, you know, the GICB or the Community Sport, all these acronyms, sorry, I tried to make sure I spelled it out, Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund. So, there's a number of these programs that are out there. I know we'll share your pain in that we know when we apply for these, it takes a long time to hear back and it makes it really difficult as a council and staff to plan and prepare budgets and get that. So, we feel your pain in that respect. You know, certainly, there's a pot of money to go around, but, you know, with four hundred and forty-four municipalities across the province, it's tough to make your case for that. You know, certainly, community fundraising and partnerships are encouraged. We recognize, you know, a new build to fundraise for something of that. It's not as easy as throwing the thermometer up on the front wall and saying, yeah, we'll do some fundraising and get it there. It's a big ask for the community. You know, but I think there's some opportunities there to leverage some other partnerships when on the private side. Not to say there, I don't know if there's any, but I think that's something to keep in the back of your mind to look at that, you know, public-private partnership to see how that can benefit the, you know, the community overall. So, first of all, just I'm going to get into the investment strategy and kind of your options. The facility from my perspective and our perspective is solid. This is a very, you have a lot of opportunities there within the facility. You know, you've got the necessary engineering reports that you'll be going through, the roof assessments and you're working with your refrigeration and so on. So, there's a lot of opportunities there. You know, I think, of course, it all depends on the budget and what, you know, what is allowable within your financial strategy or your long-range financial plan will really, you know, dictate, I guess, your first step or first option that we've highlighted there is, you know, how to extend the facility for a longer-term renovation. That is a moving target. It really depends on the scope of work. You have a lot of space, I think, you know, our initial assessment, you know, basing it on, you know, what we're seeing in the industry right now with pricing and costs because we've just recently went out for tender for this exact same thing. You know, it's, you know, with the amount of space you have, you could be up to, you know, six to seven million dollars. We know that's not feasible. So, I think it needs to, the next step needs to be very targeted in what you're going to focus in on. And we've tried to highlight that in our report. Certainly, at some point, the building will have to, you know, close for good. We feel that, you know, with an investment now that can be extended out. But I think it's never too early to start that process in looking at some options and, you know, looking for, you know, the land opportunities. How does that look like, you know, what partnerships are going to be needed? Who needs to be at the table? I think those things exist now and can be addressed now, and I think that conversation can start to happen. You know, certainly, the community needs this facility. We, you know, that's been said in the Monteith Brown Plan, you know, recognizing where we come from and working in a small community ourselves. This facility is vital. So, there's no doubt that, you know, this facility needs to remain and certainly, you know, some sort of reinvestment into it needs to take place. So, the key considerations that you want to focus in on is certainly, I think, if you were to take a look at, you know, the building as a whole, is ensuring those accessibility and legislative compliance pieces are met. That's, you know, a lot of those are by law, and you need to ensure that those systems and things are operating effectively. What are your maintenance and lifecycle costs? So, what, you know, go back to the refrigeration example. So, you know, if you're maximizing your overall control system and so on, that's going to bring down your energy costs. So, you'll be allowed to, you'll be able to kind of manage those maintenance costs. And then, you know, by doing that initial investment, you know, pushing out the, any longer-term replacements on various assets within the facility. Program flexibility and future use. I think, you know, if you look at the building now, it, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity to look at, well, how do we deliver that? And where my mind's going is your upper space, right? That's a great use of space. It's obviously a great space to watch the game or to host an event. Or what does that look like? Does that change at all? Does the, how you're delivering the program change? So, it allows you, a renovation of this kind would allow you to make those changes to your program and facility. When I say program, the kind of your facility program and how you're delivering that space. And then, of course, you know, the community identity, right? And there's a lot of sentimental pieces to that facility, a lot of history there. Certainly being, you know, built in nineteen sixty-two, there's a ton of history there that you want to preserve. I think that's important to, in your consideration. Anything you want to add?
No.
So, as we've indicated in the report, I mean, we're not engineers, right? And I think there's a lot of, there's reports that you have already in hand that tell you what you need to know and what needs to be done from a legislative compliance and so on. Our facility is in fair condition. You know, it's certainly, for a facility built in nineteen sixty-two, in my opinion, it is well-kept and that's kudos to the staff over the years that have maintained that facility. Certainly, the upgrades in two thousand seventeen were really helpful in allowing those larger change rooms to be built and give you that additional space. We feel with those targeted improvements that you could extend the life to, you know, fifteen years on this facility, perhaps more. Again, it depends how much, you know, how much you reinvest into that will be a big consideration. So, as indicated in the report, you know, phase one is that immediate safety and those legislative compliance repairs. So, go back to those roof reports, go back to those refrigeration reports and things of that nature to, you know, ensure you're meeting all those checkboxes. AODA, you know, oh, with that AODA, there's, it seems like there's a big timeline on that AODA. It's, you know, it was twenty twenty-one, now it's twenty twenty. Like, it always seems to be moving and I know it can be quite confusing, but I think focusing on the accessibility component is important, and that hits the checkbox on the legislative compliance piece. You need a renovation strategy. So, you know, kind of step one for me would be looking at this is what's our, what are we? I don't want to call it a feasibility study, but in essence, it really is a feasibility study. It's understanding, working with an architect at a low cost to understand what are some really, what are some of the things that stand out that we, changes that we can make that's going to have significant impact with those, you know, those targeted approaches on the legislative compliance, accessibility, et cetera. So, I think, you know, looking at a small investment into hiring an architect and looking at a design, some design options, what can we, how do we maximize the use of this facility? And of course, three is your long-term replacement and how are we, you know, looking at fifteen years and or even, you know, ten years just to say, okay, well, how are we going to do that? The ice demands could change any given year. We know, we've seen that kind of go up and down. I feel like we're in a bit of a hotbed of hockey and ice sports and figure skating and that in this area in southwestern Ontario. You know, we worked on a project in the GTA, and that's not the case. They're actually seeing things more on the decline. So, that changes their financial strategy and how they're doing that. So, I think that's something to note. So, just in summary, you know, we looked at this, you know, we're leveraging our expertise. There's so many similarities. We're knee-deep in our renovation project at the Elderton Arena, exact same. So, we're So we're, where you are today, we were there about three, four years ago. So, um, you know, that's a, a four million dollar in- investment, you know, in part into the refrigeration plant boards, upgraded lobby. We don't have the space that the Greenwood Arena has. It's, it's much smaller. But, uh, we looked at those targeted, um, you know, approaches. And, uh, I, we're hoping that this report gives, gives after, you know, some thought, uh, on, on where you can kind of target those, um, those improvements. You know, obviously with your, um, you know, your, your tax levy and what the community can handle from a, from that, that's, you know, a two to three million dollar investment is significant and we understand that and that's not, not something to be taken lightly. But I think there's some good return on investment here, um, you know, with respect to that. Um, certainly, you know, looking at this phased plan, it kind of prioritizes those, uh, the, the funding towards that most critical. You know, certainly your roof is your most critical at this point. I think you want to ensure, um, you know, and that's perhaps bringing back your engineer, uh, to, to continue me, and maybe you'll look at it more targeted. Maybe it's an annual inspection of that, just to, you can keep on top of that and make, you know, find any deficiencies in the, in the meantime. And like I said, the return on investment, those will ensure those, you know, the air, the arena remains safe. And, uh, uh, inclusive, it meets that A O D A target and then it continues to be that central hub in, in Petrolia. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, um, just as Scott was saying, uh, comparing comparatives to the older Tenerina. This one, um, the Greenwood Arena has so much space to, uh, work within. A lobby that is, I, I'll, I'll be honest, it's massive compared to, you know, what a lot of breaks would have. So, the opportunities are endless and, uh, engaging with an architect to, uh, and I'm not just saying take the first design you get, you know, engage a couple of different ones, maybe look at some different ideas. But there's opportunities there for that, uh, I believe can, uh, further support and, uh, make a wonderful facility for years to come.
Happy to take any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for that report. And I just, before I open it up to council, I want to mention, I do spend some time in the Illerton and Camoka Arena. Both you should be proud of those facilities, but also you're right, Illerton has no room in that lobby at all. So, but I'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion from council? Counselor Welsh?
Thank you through you. Excellent report. Thank you very much. I just one, was wondering if any of the A O D A requirements, and I realize you guys aren't the experts on this. Is there anything that needs to be met right away or will they wait for renos or what would be the first deadline for something?
I would suggest, uh, through the mayor, that, uh, immediately, uh, nothing is glaring that you would fail if there was an accessibility audit. Uh, you would be given time. It would be more so on how do you best prepare? And do you have a plan in place? Do you have an accessibility plan that would encompass a, an elevator or encompass a universal, uh, washroom or a universal change room? With, uh, you know, uh, for inclusivity. I think that there is nothing that is one hundred percent outstanding now, but at the same time, how can staff, how can council make it better and, uh, be one step ahead?
Through, and through the mayor, any, any renovation, like if you were, it will trigger that.
Yes.
Obviously. So any significant renovations going to automatically trigger that. So that's, that's a game changer.
Yep, understood.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Through you, uh, just one question. I'm not sure if you've been involved in a new build, but like, what is the duration of an actual new build, not including the planning? You know, the four or five years of planning ahead. Is it two years to build a new arena? Is it three years to build a new arena? Is it eight months?
Through the mayor, I think you'd be looking at eighteen to twenty-four months. I think depending on again, the scope, if you're building a twin pad or you're building community center as part of that, are you building some fitness facility? It all depends on the scope, but, and I say, I say that with a smile because as you know, it, it always tends to take longer. Never is the case, uh, the project, uh, timeline, although on paper at first glance, it looks great. There, there is always, uh, um, you know, hiccups along the way. Certainly I can, I can attest that, um, from building new versus renovating, building new is, um, certainly a lot less change orders. There's a lot, uh, you know, because you're building it from scratch, when, you know, when, when you're doing a renovation like, like, uh, perhaps at Greenwood. You know, unpeeling that onion is going to highlight different things that you, you know, the engineers didn't see, the architects didn't see, staff didn't see. And it creates, you know, a number of, uh, additional challenges. So, you know, uh, my recommendation of you, that investment also has to have a bit of a contingency set aside because it's inevitable. Uh, an older facility is going to, is going to bring up some, some.
Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Thank you through you. Um, thank you for your presentation. Your presentation really complements your, the, uh, the report. Um, I think the thing that made me feel good when I started to read it is to find out your experience and you're comparing. You're not from, I don't want to say this, you're not from Toronto and you're not comparing it to a Toronto facility. You're, you know, a smaller community that's, it's comparable. So I think that helped me feel more confident in what you had in the report. So I, and the presentation I think was good. So, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Just one before you go. I've spent a lot of time in that facility over the years and we're really quite proud, or I am, of what we've done to maintain that. I'm really pleased to hear that it's still in sound condition. So I think that's good news. Anything else? If not, thank you for coming to address council, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Now for council, we do have a motion on the floor regarding that. I'd like to ask if someone would like to, uh, make a, a move and second that for more discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the Largo Arena Report and that the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities bring forward any requirements for council's consideration during budget time.
Any discussion from council? Now I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Mrs. Karine Nata regarding our bylaw enforcement. I'd like to ask if you'd like to come forward, please.
I don't wish necessarily a presentation. I think council pauses if there's any questions.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if you wanted to make a, a, a presentation or not. Council does have your report. So if you want me just to open it up to questions or if you want to start with something, that's okay too.
A little general comment, um, just so all council is aware, uh, that we started this last year, the proactive versus reactive. And we know in year one, uh, we introduced the portal to the public and it turned into more of a reactive type program last year rather than proactive. We were inundated with numerous complaints and concerns in the municipality. This year, there has been less through the cloud permit portal and more proactive approach, which you can see on that report. We changed the policy, uh, a little bit. We tweaked it this year to give people seventy-two hours after we contacted them or they contacted us to comply with the bylaw, giving people a little grace period because sometimes people just aren't aware of their circumstances. You know, that they just couldn't get something. We give them a little bit of time to comply voluntarily. If they don't, then we move to an order and everything is billed back from that point. So that is where we're at. The report is in front of you. It's not really first quarter. We kind of, January was a little slow, so we did the February, March, April, May, uh, to you. So you can see if there's a different way you would like it reported to you, we'd be happy to provide those statistics, but we wanted to give you a first glimpse of, of what we're seeing this year for twenty twenty.
Great. And again, before I open this up to council, I want to mention, I'm really pleased with this. And I, I think it's for a time when I've received a lot of comments of having no enforcement to have enforcement and the proactive is great. So thank you for that. Any comments from council? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead, please.
Through you, your worship. Um, yeah, I, I like the format. I think you guys, and even with redacted, um, addresses. Um, I drive around Petroy a lot and I think I, in my mind, I've figured them all out. But no, I, I think there are ones that, uh, uh, needed to be addressed. So I appreciate the format.
Thank you. And your counselor Clark, go ahead.
And I just wanted to add, uh, through you that this is pretty much exactly what I was hoping for when I brought this forward. The first year of council or whatever, this is exactly, exactly what I was hoping it would turn out to be where, you know, we're not coming down, dropping the hammer on these people. We're giving them some time to, to make amends and fix things up and, and then if they're, if they don't take advantage of that opportunity, then move forward. And I think that, you know, a lot of people came to me during the campaign with, uh, concerns of lack of bylaw enforcement. And I think this is ideal.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I am pleased that you brought it forward at that time a year or so ago. Anything else from council? This is Nata. Thank you for coming to address council. Keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. This will take us now to item number thirteen, which is.
We just have a motion to receive and file that report.
Oh, okay. I'll ask for a move and second move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Deputy Mayor Field. And that this item be received and filed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any discussion from council? All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now to the community announcements, recognitions and awards. You do have a motion there for your consideration. I'll ask for a move and a second to put it on the table for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive his information only, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five, community announcements as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing at this time, your worship. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us for the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Is there anyone here wishing to address council? Now, we'll move on to item number fifteen. Administration, we have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Deputy Operations Clerk regarding the update municipal code, uh, regarding parking. And you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I will ask the clerk to read that, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of, for direct, the Director of Legislative Services dated June ninth, two thousand twenty-five regarding updates to the parking provisions in the town of Petrolia and that the parking bylaw before council tonight be endorsed as presented. And I believe we have an amendment, your worship.
Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Yes, I guess just the one thing that sticks out to me is that, uh, in the draft bylaw, it talks about, uh, four-hour parking limit on the entirety of Petroy Line from Oil Heritage all the way to Uzlovsky. I think maybe for the first round, maybe we just focus on the commercial, uh, retail section in town. So maybe, so my amendment would be that we amend by law twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-five, section six C one to the intersection of Oil Street and Petroy Line and Princess Street and Petroy Line instead of Oil Heritage Road and Uzlovsky.
Okay. And you would like to make that amendment? We'll need a seconder for that, seconded by Counselor Welsh. So I will have the clerk read that again. So we're clear, but remember, we're just voting on the amendment first. And then we'll vote on the motion as amended. Go ahead, Mrs. Pearson.
And that is for bylaw number twenty of two, twenty, two thousand twenty-five, section six C, item one, to, uh, be reflected of the intersection of Oil Street and Princess Street instead of Oil Heritage and Uzlovsky Street.
And I would like to ask, because you were involved with this, do you have anything you would like to add?
I know, I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever council's wishes are. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from council? We're clear on that. We're voting on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll mo- vote on the motion as amended. And we do have a move and a seconder? Okay. Any discussion regarding the motion as amended? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on to finance. We have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, C E O Treasurer regarding the Blue Water Power two thousand twenty-four dividends and interest. You do have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by, uh, Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the C E O Treasurer dated the ninth of June, two thousand twenty-five regarding our two thousand twenty-four Blue Water Power dividends and interest revenue.
I just want to mention, that's great news for the town that we continue to do this, but I will ask Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, through your worship, just said, uh, the water power has been a great investment. Uh, the town, as all council knows, has a very strong relationship with Blue Water Power. Uh, in addition to what's here, they actually support several of our events every year. Um, that's great. Thanks, uh, former mayor, Russell Harris. And former C E O, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. And you're right, if council remembers, last year for our one fifty, they donated fifteen thousand dollars to go towards our event. So they are great supporters of the town of Petrolia. All right. If nothing else, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to operations. We have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations regarding the two thousand twenty-five sidewalk replacement and road resurfacing tender results. Uh, you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the Director of Operations dated June ninth, two thousand twenty-five regarding the two thousand twenty-five sidewalk replacement and road resurfacing, also known R one, R two, tender results and that the project be awarded to Sevcon Construction in the amount of six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents excluding H S T.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to Parks and Recreation Facilities. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation Facilities regarding the cancellation of the Mobile Concession Vehicle Agreement down in Bridgeview Park. Now, we do have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated June ninth, two thousand twenty-five regarding cancellation of the Mobile Concession Vehicle Agreement. And that the clerk be directed to rescind bylaw twenty-four of two thousand twenty-four and waive the cancellation fee of five hundred dollars. And that the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities be directed to cancel the portable toilet rental for Bridgeview Park South.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
So I have one amendment, uh, for this section here, and that is that, uh, we amend the motion so that section twelve D of bylaw twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four be waived as part of the cancellation. And I will read that clause so everyone knows, uh, what it says. It says, uh, should the contractor cancel the contract within three hundred and sixty-five days of its execution, the contractor shall be prohibited from ta- the tender process to obtain a replacement contract for the period of one tender term.
So just so I'm clear on that, that amendment is saying that he would not be able to bid on that? Or are you changing that so he can?
He can.
Okay. All right. So are you going to make that motion to make that amendment? It's moved by council, only the seconder, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Can I interrupt before?
Yep.
I'd like to declare conflict on this.
Okay, sure. Okay.
And I, I felt it out and I apologize when I read through it the first time until it was mentioned with the watching.
That's okay. That's why I usually say now we're at the appropriate time. So thank you. Please note that Counsel, Deputy Mayor Field has, uh, stepped back and left the chamber or the, his seat. His seat. I will ask now, we, we have, uh, an amendment that we're voting on first. Is there any questions regarding that amendment? Would you like it read? You okay with it? All right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that amendment? Opposed? That amendment carries. Now we'll vote on the motion as amended. Any discussion regarding the motion as amended? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. I should ask, Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Not at this time, your worship.
Okay, thank you. And moving on, we have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation Facilities regarding the A T V rally considerations. And you do have a motion proposed before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities and the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated June ninth, two thousand twenty-five regarding the A T V rally consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And as a reminder to council, we had stated at the last meeting of the council that we would have a report coming to this meeting regarding the A T Vs. So I just want to make it clear, what this is saying is we're keeping the same as we always have. We are not approving it. So just so you're clear, all those or any further discussion regarding this motion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. And we have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, regarding the MSA gas monitoring station upgrades and MSA gas monitoring station upgrades. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Fields, seconded by Council Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated June ninth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the MSA gas monitoring upgrades and that that it be allocated seventeen thousand six hundred sixty six dollars of the arena capital budget to the MSA gas monitoring system upgrades.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Mrs. Bullock, can you give us just a brief overview in a nutshell, please?
Absolutely, your worship. We found that we needed to have the gas monitoring system calibrated. When the company came in to do that calibration, some of our sensors were outdated. So we basically had to go through and have all of those sensors upgraded so that the system could be calibrated and is now working appropriately.
Thank you, Mrs. Bullock. All right, I'll open it up. Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us now to the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Seeing none, we'll move on to new and unfinished business. I have none at this time. That'll move us on to the consideration of the bylaws. I'd like to have the bylaw approved, to have them read at first of all, a first and second time. I'll need a motion to have them read, moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Council Clark. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, finally passed, signed, sealed and numbered. I'll need a move in a second for the third reading, moved by Council Hyatt, seconded by Council Welsh, and I will direct the clerk to read those bylaws, please.
And that is for bylaw number twenty of twenty two thousand twenty five, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to provide for the regulation of traffic and parking in the town of Petrolia be read a third time and finally passed as amended. And that bylaw twenty one of two thousand twenty five, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the councils of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including June ninth, two thousand twenty five, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you. Any discussions from council, Council Welsh?
Seven A, I believe, should read Robert Street and not James Street parking bylaw.
Oh.
I guess, sir, your worship, I I spoke with Council Welsh earlier on this. That is an administrative error that can be corrected through the bylaw.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. If any other thing, if nothing else, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those bylaws? Opposed, that motion carries. And I need a motion for adjournment, moved by Council Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.